Representative.
Sure.
What's up?
How are you, Ben?
I'm coming.
Oh.
All right, as always, man.
November. My, I just ended. The second Monday is better than today. Better than today. Yes. No, I'm thinking about, um, yeah. We don't, we'll meet on Tuesday. Okay, that's, that's what I want to say. Okay. But, Francisco, we're near. We have to cast in Oakland. So, we're moving back on Sunday. I has never been. A few days, Ben, you got a couple of days. What else? Police, yes. Been, I've been there a couple of times, but it hasn't, it's been a while. And, oh, and the good thing was, the last time I was there, for a conference, and, and the guy who was my roommate, so, so I know you want to go. Went to, went to a baseball game. It was, it was during the summer, late, late summer.
I love Jerry. Very, very huge involved. And it's, and it's.
Yeah. That's why I thought. Then, so.
It's a lot. Yeah. It's a, it's a. You can start. They're.
Place. It's probably the end. Well, if we check some stuff and try to get out, maybe largely, maybe. I read the horse. I have a gun. So, I'm interested in. You were trying to start, I thought, talking about. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He think that would affect me. And no, I don't want to.
Quickly, yeah.
Well. I was like, I was ordering.
That was.
Which. Well, he came down when I ordered. I don't know that.
Yeah, I wanted to. Wanted to be. Be a person. Because I'm, I'm, I'm. But I do.
You give them on the watch every day.
Yes.
I made that. I would, I would. Two, there is. It's, um. Yeah. I have a little. I have. I'm going to. We started. Yeah. I mean, that part was like, we don't wait until four. I think she was going to succeed when we did. So, it's kind of like, I hope she goes to. But I have. Looking rather. Number six. Whatever. No. Until they have. She done it. Now, I think. Last night. Not this. That was like. Yeah, that's how I've been so long. Then I'll. Right, we're here, ready? They don't use the car and their.
Yeah.
Let, give me, let me make an announcement in case. Good evening, we're going to get started, I just want to remind anyone here that would like to speak on, uh, during public forum or, um, on an agenda item, please sign up at the podium right now before, um, we get started. Anyone that didn't sign up? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell, here.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilman Santin.
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Fajet.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Okay, thank you, um, we ask you to stand if you are able to for the invocation by Councilman Walter Fajet.
We pray for the agenda set forth before us this evening, and ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony when there's honest disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak, and the patience to listen receptively and empathically when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter, and a keen sense of the welfare and needs of our residents. May we be reminded that we're not only leaders, but also servants, and that it's our responsibility to serve the common good of all the residents of Miami Springs. Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States. One thing. Under one. The. The. For.
Welcome, everyone, to our October fourteenth regular meeting, it's wonderful to see so many friendly faces here in the audience, and for those of you that are joining us virtually, welcome also. Uh, we'll get started with our awards and presentations, we have a very, very special presentation tonight. Um, we have our, uh, state representative Alex Rizzo, and also, um, Alicia from our state senator, uh, Brian Avila's office, um, Senator Brian Avila is deployed, responding to the, um, the emergencies of, of Hurricane Milton and Hurricane Helene, but, um, we have a presentation, uh, from, the councilman, uh, from Representative Rizzo and Senator Avila, uh, they worked really, really hard this past legislative session in Tallahassee for us. We had several appropriations for infrastructure, for the senior center, um, so for so many things that we need. We need, um, the state funding to, to meet our commitments and to, um, continually provide for our residents in our community. And, uh, Senator Avila and Representative Rizzo went to bat for us, um, as they always do. Uh, they brought home a lot of appropriations for our community, um, much more than other communities when you hear what they've applied for, what they came home with, um, was much less, so for that, we're very grateful, and Representative Rizzo, you would like to, to say some words?
Well, thank you, Mayor, uh, Council. Hello, uh, Mr. Manager, Madam Plurk, Madam Attorney, everyone at home and sitting behind us, hello, um, so I am Representative Alex Rizzo, and, uh, it's, it's an honor to be here before you tonight, uh, and I spoke with a senator recently, he is, as you said, deployed, uh, he was deployed, this is actually, I think, his third deployment, um, Alicia, right, he was deployed for Hurricane Helene, and then he was deployed, uh, to kind of be a longshoreman and work docks, uh, during the, uh, the strike. Uh, but luckily, that ended quickly, and then, uh, he came home, and then he was, right away, he just turned around, and, and now he's deployed for, uh, relief and response for Hurricane Milton, so, uh, you know, if you would all keep him, uh, you know, and what he's doing in your prayers, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of affected people out there, a lot, and so he's doing God's work, and he's representing your community very, very well out there. So, Mayor, as you said, um, you know, we, we did, uh, have a number of appropriations, and, and we ask, as you know, we ask for that. Uh, we want to bring home as much as we can, we don't want to be just a donor community. And so, um, you know, we, we were successful, you're right, some, some larger municipalities did not do as well, so per capita, actually Miami Springs, Virginia Gardens did, did very, very well. Um, there were a few vetoes at the last minute, the, the, the governor chose to, uh, hold back a little bit of funds, he wanted to be a little more fiscally responsible, as he, as he called it, even though I thought that we were fiscally responsible, he doubled that a little bit, tightened the belt one more notch. Um, and it was because of things like this, like we've just seen in the last few weeks. Uh, Florida is doing very, very well financially, fiscally, we are extremely responsible, we're probably, uh, I think we've got the least amount of debt, uh, per capita of any state of the fifty, and, uh, we are now about the thirteenth largest economy in the world. Uh, if you can imagine, that is, that is amazing, amazing, okay? And so we do have a lot of challenges, but the future is bright, and so with all of your help, with all of the, the input from citizens like those of Miami Springs, um, we're able to get up there and kind of make some, uh, some rational decisions, and, uh, and certainly, you know, um, try to create the best atmosphere possible for, for everyone to live within the state of Florida in a very safe place and a very prosperous place. So I thank you for the opportunity to, to, uh, to be part of this, and to certainly to, uh, to represent Miami Springs, um, as you know, we have an election, God willing, you know, the residents of District one twelve, my district will, will have me back, and I believe Senator Avila will be back as well, and we'll be able to continue what we've done. And so with me is Bethany Keim, my legislative aide, um, Carmen Chu Mingo, uh, my district aide is not able to be here tonight, she's feeling a little under the weather, and we have Miss, uh, Alicia. I am. So we're going to come up, Bo, you've got to get up here with me. And so, so with this, we've got senior meals, and we've got, um, Forest Drive Stormwater Projects, um, which totaled, we don't have any other, other, other projects included in this? Okay. Right. Right, so we do, do have, as you know, we, we've had, uh, uh, one million dollars for the stormwater project, and we hope to get started on that very, very quickly, and we have three hundred seventy-five thousand for this year for the senior meals, uh, that goes along with Virginia Gardens, and so, uh, for a total of one point three five, seven, five million dollars.
And, and I want to say for, um, the benefit of our residents, um, you know, with the appropriations, we work very closely with our state representative and our state senator on trying to, um, decide which appropriations we should apply for, um, getting to the point that we get, that later the governor vetoed some of them, but even getting, we had much more approved. That was a major achievement, later on, the governor goes through on, as Representative Rizzo said, you know, he kind of was a little more conservative than we would have liked, pertaining to us, but, um, the fact that we even got so many appropriations that close, um, many more than this, and the, the Forest Drive Project is the continued infrastructure that we've made a commitment to, um, here for our city of improving the flooding, the roadways, um, a lot of areas in Miami Springs where, uh, you know, need that kind of infrastructure for many, many years, um, we weren't doing that, and now we're doing the stormwater controls to make sure that throughout our community, that we're providing the best accessibility, the best storm control, um, the best roadways, the best infrastructure, and always the best quality of life, but, um, I also wanted to say that Representatives Rizzo and Senator Avila are so accessible to us, and that's not always, um, something you can count on with, you know, elected officials at the state or federal level. Uh, whenever we reach out to them, immediately, we can talk to them, we can let them know issues that we're having, we get feedback, we get guidance on how to, to navigate certain, um, issues, um, certain challenges, and, um, I can tell you from personal experience, my years here, um, their support for our community has been unwavering, and for that, we're very, very grateful, and the appropriations that we've gotten over so many years, I don't know how many millions of dollars, um, I know Senator Avila said that, um, uh, added up, uh, for many years, um, that they have acquired for us, so thank you again for that.
Mayor, here you go, from the state of Florida, there you go. You. Oh, and I forgot to, I forgot to mention.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I, I forgot to mention that, that, uh, part of, one of the, some of the vetoes, actually, there is a grant program that some of the appropriations that were approved and later vetoed actually qualify for, and I believe, um, the city has started to, to apply for that, because there was another pot of money that didn't really affect Florida's budget. So there are a number of projects that still will be funded, and God willing, you'll be very successful in getting those.
When you see the roadwork that's going on throughout the city, and you go, oh my God, this is closed off and all this, know that, um, we're really making major improvements, um, to our community and infrastructure, and, um, it's thanks to the appropriations from the state, so thank you again.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Representative.
Okay, um, let's see, um, under order of business, I wanted to ask if the council is, um, in agreement to item nine B that will remove it from the consent agenda, and we'll, uh, do it after the consent agenda, is that all right?
Please remove it. Just looking at other people.
Okay. Um, let's move to open forum, and I have several people assigned up to speak under, uh, open forum. I want to, um, remind everyone, uh, open forum is a, um, is, allows for you, whoever wants to speak, to address all of us at one, at once. It really is one-way communication, you speak to us, we don't respond, we are listening, but you have all of our ears at one time, plus the community who's hearing your concerns, um, if you want to follow up on anything afterwards, either tonight or, you know, tomorrow, you can reach out to any of us individually to talk further about whatever issue raised, or to our city manager or city clerk, um, and they'll be willing to assist you in, in how to navigate whatever your issue is, okay? Um, and we also ask, we have, we have a small group signed up, so I'm going to ask everyone to keep your comments to no more than three minutes when you come up to speak. Okay, first on the agenda is, um, Neri Owens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good.
And people. I'm Neri Owens, and I want to inform everyone that's watching and everyone that's here that in this week's agenda that was posted on the city's website, there were no supporting documents. And I, I spoke to Erica, and I understand it was just an oversight, I never want to return to yesteryear when magpie vows would make you have a public record request in order to see the document that was going to be on the Monday agenda, and you could only do it Friday afternoon or Monday morning, and many times, you never got the document until after the agenda, after like Tuesday or Wednesday. So we've come a long way, a very long way in transparency, and I want to make sure, as long as I'm alive, that we're going to have those documents posted on websites, so everyone, your voters and your residents, and people that don't even live in the Springs can access this information, because information is power, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Kathleen Fleishman.
My name is Kathleen Fleishman, I live at eight one zero Pine Chris Drive, and, uh, a little nervous. So, um, I'm here tonight, uh, as a longstanding member of the Miami Springs Historical Society, um, and certainly a current member. And the issue that has, uh, that I have just heard about is our building, the little historical, uh, building at five oh one, uh, East Drive, has no signage. It's just a, it's this tiny white building, and I'm happy that the city, uh, gave that to us, uh, but there was pushback, uh, in terms of putting something on, uh, on the side of the building. And so, uh, it was my understanding that it, that the pushback came because no murals are allowed, but I would say that it's signage that, that's needed on the side of that building. So if you see hundreds of cars on East Drive every day going from, uh, south to north, that's visibility, because nobody really knows what that little white building is. And so, my thought is that to have signage that says on the side of the building, Miami Springs Historical Society, established, we were nineteen eighty-six, and the Thunderbird, which is our logo. And I believe if it's looked that way, and it's, I want to say that's not a mural, it's signage, and we need something like that. We are also, as a five oh one C three, we are educational, people come to, to our little museum, and they are educated about the history of Miami Springs, all of the airline history that we have, the history of Glenn Curtis. And we're, November first, we're going to actually have at the, in concert with the, uh, Curtis Mansion, a wonderful gala where, uh, I, I can't recall his name at the moment, but he's going to come from Hammond's Port to speak about Glenn Curtis, so we're approaching our one hundred centennial. I think we owe it to Glenn Curtis to have more of a, a, a visual to let people know, and as you're driving, somebody can say, wow, I never knew the Miami Springs Historical Society had a society, and wow, I never knew it was in that building. So I would say, uh, if it's something with zoning or something with permitting, uh, let's approach it with the semantics of its signage, and this is what we need, and I think we should all be proud that we have a historical society. My husband and I have traveled all around the country, and every town that we go to, if they have a historical society, we sign up, because history matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have, um, two people that are signed up for the, they moved to the agenda items, so we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, so we'll move now to approval of the council minutes from the September twenty-third regular meeting. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Santin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Fajet.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, we don't have reports from boards and commissions, Erica, how's that, because we're almost to the end of the year.
We're going to get a whole bunch, uh, October twenty-eighth, the next meeting, there is, they're scheduled to be here.
Uh, because, uh, we've asked for all the boards to, once a year, come before the council and just give us an update on how the advisory boards, um, and, and so that we can learn how we can, um, help them, assist them in, in achieving their goals also. Um, we don't have public hearings, so we'll go to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is actually A, C, and D, nine A, C, and D, because we've removed, uh, B, we'll do that afterwards. Um, is there anyone that wants to pull an item? In the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, I did want to pull, um, D for discussion. So is there a motion for A and C?
Motion to approve nine A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay.
It would be A and C.
I'm sorry, A, C, A and C?
A and C.
That, uh, Councilman?
You're. N C.
Okay. You're seconding it, seconding it? Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilman Santin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Fajet.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you, I did want to just pull, um, item nine D because, uh, I feel that for our residents, um, I would like the city manager just to give an update, we had a discussion on this with, um, the food and beverage um, at the country club, uh, I think back in the spring.
Yes.
And so, uh, now we're renewing the contract for a year.
Yes.
Um, if you could just give us an update of, um, If you could just give us an update of the situation.
Well, at the at the last meeting that this was discussed a few months ago, I don't remember the exact date. There was an issue that the obviously when the golf course was under construction, the HRS management, they they fell behind on their payments. So when I came in and started working here and I became the city manager, I worked with them and came to an agreement to get past that, and we settled that issue and that we brought that item before the council at that moment and got it approved. At that meeting as well, it was discussed, and I believe it was Councilman Fahet that made the motion to extend the contract, or at least to bring it back to extend the contract on a yearly basis for up to five years. So you got the council will extend it for a year, and then at the at a meeting to be decided, we'll come back, discuss it, and then vote again for the for the following year. And that'll happen up to five years. So what we did is we came back, we incorporated that language, and now this is what we're doing. I would, I am happy to report that after that meeting, HRS is is up to date on their payments. I've had no issues with them. They they painted the entire, the inside of the the facility. They completed the restrooms, the renovation to the restrooms. So I've had no issues with them. So I feel confident in approving this.
Thank you for the status, J.C. All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve 9D.
I'll second that.
B, I'm sorry.
9D.
Oh, it's D, it's D.
9D.
D like a dog. Okay. Any discussion? We have a second from Councilwoman Bravo. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so now we'll do item 9B.
As to be a recusal.
Yes. Okay, so for this, is this going to be recused when I come off? Or is this going to be also open for discussion? I recuse first and then?
So when a council member recuses himself from an item, you're recused from the discussion and participation and vote. So you recuse and?
Okay, so for the record, I'm going to be recusing myself on item 9B because I have a relative that is a direct vendor of the CMI. But I'd also like to disclose, just for the record, my vote would have been no. So I'll go ahead and step off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me know when you're ready.
We'll call you back, Councilwoman. Okay, so J.C. or Heidi, Erica, can you read the resolution?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, approving an operating and management agreement with Curtis Mansion Incorporated, providing for authorization, providing for implementation, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve 9B.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say that the members on the board of CMI have, this is a group, like throughout our city, our civic clubs, as I've said numerous times, and and the members that serve on CMI are passionate about what they do, about the history of our city, the history of the Curtis Mansion, providing, making sure that 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 the Curtis Mansion doesn't just exist, that it is a thriving part of our community, which is a difficult thing to do when we live in a city where, you know, in a community in South Florida where there is so much happening around us. Certainly, this is a gem. Curtis Mansion is a gem for the city of Miami Springs. It's something that we're all very proud of. And I wanted to officially thank the members of the CMI Board. They do so much more, and I happen to know a lot of them don't just invest their their time, their invest their professional expertise, and a lot of times their personal funds to support and the events and and the Curtis Mansion. So for that, thank you on behalf of all of our community. If there's no further discussion, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. We move to we move to new business, and we have an ordinance, the first reading. Oh, yes, thank you.
While she's doing that, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance title. It's an ordinance for the City of Miami Springs, Florida, amending the city code by creating Chapter 36 of the City's Code of Ordinances, Emergency Management, to provide necessary and appropriate emergency management authorizations, responsibilities, and procedures, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. This is an ordinance on
You turned off your mic.
This ordinance is to allow the manager to have certain emergency management powers in situations like the one we just experienced with the hurricane. It can be for a tropical storm, other types of disasters, tornadoes. What it basically does is it provides him with the ability to issue a declaration of a state of emergency, which then opens the door to reimbursement from FEMA if and when there's damage, and you need to rely on some of your debris removal contractors, your debris monitoring contractors, all of that. It's sort of part of the overall holistic package that then gets sent up to FEMA in order to get reimbursed. So that's basically what this does. It provides him with the authority to have some extraordinary procurement purchasing powers, and that's about it. This is an ordinance, by the way, that's utilized in cities throughout Miami-Dade County. We were actually surprised that we didn't have one in Miami Springs. So this ordinance is very similar to the ordinance of many of our sister communities, North Bay Village, Key Biscayne, Cutler Bay, Pinecrest, et cetera.
Councilwoman, we're discussing, our city attorney just read the the first reading of the ordinance for the state of emergency, emergency management.
Thank you.
And basically, what this does is it allows us when a state of emergency is called in anticipation of a disaster like we were facing with Milton, it allows when our city manager calls a state of emergency, it, as Heidi said, it positions us to be able to, should we need to access contracts and vendors not having to go through the routine way of, you know, three bids and, you know, this process, it it positions us in a in a way that we're able to readily respond to what is needed for our community. So this just establishes that the city attorney, city manager will be calling state of emergency.
And Mayor, you're absolutely correct, and I think it also, and the our attorney alluded to it, it facilitates our being able to get reimbursement from FEMA sooner, which is, that's always a good thing because that usually you have to, when these kinds of disasters happen, you have to forward fund things and then wait for your reimbursement from FEMA. So I think it's a good thing, and it's it's something that's very common, and I'm glad that we are now able to do that.
We've established the process.
Richard?
Yes, sir.
I believe it's very important to have clear guidance, especially in in emergency situations. Know exactly what needs to be done. We all think we know what needs to be done, but to have it spelled out, I think it's very important. I'm very much in support of this ordinance.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 11A.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to 12A, a vote of confidence for our city manager, J.C. Jimenez, as required by our city charter. I will get started. J.C., you started a year ago, just over a year. I think we're a year and a month into your anniversary. We handed you a very large platter of especially last year. We had a lot of meetings going on toward the end of, if you remember, all the council members, I mean, every single week and sometimes several times a week on a lot of different issues that were happening and that we had to address. And you came on board. You've brought a new outlook on a lot of of issues in the city, on a lot of ways to tackle concerns throughout the city, progress, processes, procedures. And that's based on your experience with other cities, which I think is very, very valuable. I particularly appreciate your calm demeanor. When presented with something, I know I'm talking to you all the time, several times a day, sometimes, and several times, several times a day, sometimes about different issues, and he's just, you're calm about it, but you always think it through, and you come up with options, possibilities, solutions are well thought out. They're based on your professional expertise, your knowledge, and your understanding of what's in the best interest of our city. Every city is different. So for that, I'm very happy with this past year, and I think you've done fantastic job, not the least of our millage rate. Our millage rate, despite everything that, you know, the the inflation that has been unprecedented the past two years, and it certainly affected all the cities, and a lot of cities have had to increase their millage rate substantially last year and this year. And you knew that we felt very strongly that we did not want to increase the millage rate for our residents. In fact, we want to continue lowering it, the trajectory that we've been on for many, many years. And you managed to provide us with a budget to work with our city departments, department directors, and the staff, and provide us with a budget that amazingly actually lowered our millage rate. Small amount, but still, it's in that pathway. That's what's important. So for that, I'm very impressed by that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
When we initiated the process of selecting a new city manager, part of the thought process is this person is going to replace Mr. Alonso. You know, he's been here for so many years, done some great work, someone that I worked with when I started as a councilman. And so that weighed a little bit on us, you know, trying to figure out, you know, and then we had the consultant that did the actual, you know, gathering of resumes. And I can tell you honestly, as I told him before, he was the guy that I was looking at. And when we had the interviews, it reinforced what I saw in his professional experience and abilities. And and he's been exactly that. I think the mayor described it well. Always accessible, very thoughtful, open to suggestions, and when we see things a little differently. And so I am, that's my confidence.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir. Well, as everybody else has said, we are definitely happy with the decision to get Mr. Jimenez on board, mainly because we brought, he brought in a new perspective of how to handle the position. And he was definitely right off the get-go with a lot of challenges, and he's stepped it up and done a great job, especially a lot with the processes that, you know, sometimes he leaves these things kind of scratching his head, wondering how do how do we get through? Because our town does have a lot of antiquated procedures and processes. So we got to give him credit that he has a lot of work, and he knows he still has a lot of work ahead of him. But I am definitely proud of the decision that we made as a council and continue working with him. So you definitely got my vote of confidence.
Thank you.
Well, to the chair, now that everybody said something, you are not my first pick.
Yeah, I know.
Because everybody starts off with peaches and cream. It's it's been a pleasure getting to know you and getting to work with you, understanding you. We've gotten alone, for me, the highlight was the budget. To be quite frank with you, we got into, you know, those rabbit holes, and and you came through. So that, for me, was a big showcase for me. And like with any city, I mean, I'm still learning, and and you're going to still learn, right? I just
You learn every day.
The goal is, let's not go back. I don't want to go back to where we were. And I just hope that you can keep a strong mindset and just continue to be unbiased because at the end of the day, it's your job. We're elected, but our community will still hold you accountable. So as of today, you'll have my vote of confidence.
Thank you.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, with respect to a vote of confidence, I I appreciate the professionalism, the keen insights that the city manager brings. I think he's done a good job of understanding what was in place in our city and and then making changes that he thought were necessary in the best interest of the city. And in particular, there were certain processes that we had that were cumbersome and complex and sometimes contentious, pardon the alliteration. But but he he went a long ways in terms of making things efficient and 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 streamlining things. I'm thinking in particular, you know, how how things went with with negotiations, with with lease and and the budget process. Things were streamlined and more effective, and I appreciate that. I'm certainly pleased and encouraged, and I'm excited about our future and our trajectory with with J.C. at the helm. So thank you.
So I think we have a unanimous vote of confidence for a city manager.
If I, I appreciate that. If I may, just real quick, I do want to let you know, it has been just a little over a year since I started here. There's a number of accomplishments that we have collectively tackled in in this one year. It's it's incredible how much we've actually accomplished. But I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate each and every one of you. I truly believe that you are true, are the true definition of an elected official. You guys, nobody's perfect. None of us are perfect. But I think you guys really embody what it is to be a city councilperson. You guys care about your city. You guys care about your neighbors. You guys know your neighbors, and that's what you want to do. You want to make your city better. And it is with absolute joy that I serve you and these residents who are just among the best I've ever dealt with. This place is as special as they come. And I and as as I told you the day you hired me, I will do everything to protect this community and keep it, keep it, advance it forward, but keeping that small-town feel where everybody respects each other and civility is alive and well because that's not the case for any other city, for many other cities. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And to the residents here, you have my commitment. We will keep trying.
Okay, and we move to discussion on county-owned properties in Miami Springs. We're talking about actually airport-owned properties in Miami Springs. There's three lots over in the southeast area. If you imagine where the Office Depot is in that general area, three lots that are airport-owned. And Sylvia, are you going to?
Um, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We would need a vote for that vote of confidence.
Oh, okay, surely.
A motion and a
To the chair.
I, oh, goodness gracious, I just realized I have someone signed up to speak on Agenda Item 9D. And I passed it up. We took a vote. So, Neri, I apologize. And I I wait, no, 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 I don't apologize. I want to know why you didn't tell me because you always speak up. So.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The only thing I wanted to say on 9D is it's time to go out for a request for proposal or a bid to manage the food and beverage at the golf course. And by extending the contract to next June, you've got comfortable time to see who else out there has real experience, hands-on, in catering and events. We really need an event planner at that airport. It's beautiful. We've done, as a city, an outstanding job of bringing those those greens and everything in. You've got a great golf course director. I'm happy with everything. But I think for food and beverage, it's time to go out and get somebody with real experience. And by the way, our city manager has lived up to his resume. I was not too warm about it because I really preferred Tammy, but he has exceeded, exceeded my expectations. I give him an A+.
Yeah, wait, exceeding Neri's expectations is
An A+ for that teacher? Teacher, I there's.
Better than that.
Thank you, Neri.
Thank you. All right, um, so let's go to um, item. And we do have someone who wants to speak on uh, twelve B. So um, let's hear, let me go ahead and have them speak because we'll forget, we'll get into um, we have um.
The vote, yeah, the vote.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Everyone keeps me on track. All right, the vote of confidence for our esteemed city manager.
Motion to approve twelve A.
Full second thought.
Second.
Any discussion?
I already seconded.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Double second, okay. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. Um, okay, so for the discussion on county owned and, and again, like I said, we're talking about airport owned. They're owned by the airport department properties in Miami Springs. Let's first hear from our resident who wants to speak on this because I'm afraid we'll get into it and forget to hear from them. And that is um, Roy Cow, Roy Cow? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Evening.
Um, I'm sorry for the attire. I came straight from work. I found out about this meeting at six thirty. Excuse me.
Well, thank you for coming.
In regards to this, um, I really don't know. I believe this might be regarding the zoning. Is that what this twelve B is? I'm asking.
Uh, well, we're going to just, no, it's not regarding zoning. It's regarding a, a prod, a proposal that we heard about.
Okay, and I, and I, my understanding was that they're trying to put low income buildings there or something to that effect.
We have nothing definite at the time. Um, we're going to let our city um, planner provide the information that we know. Um, so why don't you just go ahead and, and tell us what your concern is?
Basically, my concern was that they were going to put low income housing. Because I've, after two or three years down thirty-sixth, if you go down that street going east, you're going to see it after two or three years, those buildings look like trash. Okay, and then besides that, if you go into Hialeah, right here on the other side of Hialeah Drive, okay, the amount of cars, what they already did here in the circle with this building, I didn't find out to the evening of the meeting, so I wasn't able to attend. Okay? But they've only got like five residents in there. When that building gets full, it's going to be a disaster. If the, if they continue to put buildings around the springs like they've done in Doral, look what happens on, on thirty-sixth street going towards Doral. It's going to be the same thing. So I'll just wait for another meeting when, and I'm, and I apologize because I thought that's what it was about.
All right, thank you so much. All right. Okay, so let's go ahead and um, Sylvia, our, our city planner is going to um, start the discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Evening.
Council. As you know, as city planner, part of my job is to field calls and emails from members of the public, from residents to architects, to real estate, the uh, realtors and, and, and engineers and developers and property owners of all kinds uh, about zoning. And uh, not very long ago, a couple of months, three months maybe, uh, I received a uh, an email inquiry from a property owner. Property owner being the county aviation department, which owns three very significant pieces of property within the boundaries of Miami Springs. They happen to all be located within the southeast thirty-sixth district, which is a district that we're studying right now, as you all know. Um, and uh, is, this inquiry was with regards to what the zoning provisions uh, were that applied to this, these particular properties. The uh, inquiry was also accompanied by a copy of an unsolicited proposal that the aviation repart- department uh, through the uh, commissioner, the district commissioner's office had received. Um, and it did indeed have um, um, you know, the concept for three buildings, one which will go on one of uh, each of these three properties, uh, potentially under the live local act. My response to that, which I immediately let the, the manager know that this had come in, uh, was to do an analysis of what the actual zoning uh, allows today, our zoning. Um, and I turned that around to the aviation department, which our zoning today is significantly lower than the proposed uses, the proposed um, densities uh, that um, that were contemplated in them proposal. So um, after that, we didn't hear uh, much for a while, uh, but um, our understanding is that the um, uh, the unsolicited proposal was making the rounds through the permanent uh, departments at the county. And uh, so there had been some additional discussions, not, not with me until Friday. Um, Friday I received, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't Friday, it was Wednesday, the day that we were supposed to be uh, under um, the threat of some effects from Milton, I received an email from another county department, uh, the um, uh, internal services division, real estate um, department uh, with the same inquiry, except that this time was only for one of the three properties, not all three. So I again responded with basically the same information that I had already provided about all three, but you know, cut it down to the one. Uh, explained the limitations of our zoning, explained the limitations of our charter, explained also the fact that we are in the process ourselves, so revisiting this uh, zoning district to figure out what the vision of the city is for it. Um, and um, I just want to make clear for the residents that it is not uh, as, at least from, you know, what I have been receiving, it's not that the city is opposed to development in that area. In fact, the whole purpose of the study that we're conducting is to figure out how to develop it to the benefit of the city. And today, the zoning does allow for multifamily housing, it does allow for mixed use, it does allow for buildings that can go up to a hundred and twenty feet. So the problem was not that particular set of conditions, but the fact that these uh, buildings, these projects were all at a density much higher than anything that we have in the city today. Or can imagine that we will have any, anywhere. So um, I will just kind of say that this is sort of where we are still for them making the rounds. I know that you all have had some conversations with county officials uh, about, you know, loftier things that I'm involved in, uh, coordination, you know, but uh, as a result of the email that I sent to um, the real estate division on Friday, I did get a phone call from the uh, senders of that email. And they were a lot more inquiring than the aviation department. They asked me, you know, what we, what I, what, you know, what I thought that, you know, the pulse of the, the council was with respect to density, what the vision for the city was, you know, would, would there be a chance that there would be something that could be done with density? And I explained everything that I've just said with respect to our process. And I suggested that it might be a really good idea for the developer to come and talk to us directly, which they agreed that that was a good idea. I'm not sure that they have the power to force that, but they said that they would make that recommendation. And I talked to J C immediately after my call and let him know to hopefully expect a call. So um, this is kind of where we are. I know that um, there was um, I guess, an article in the Herald today that speaks a little bit about this. And um, you know, I'm going to leave it for your discussion.
Thank you. Does anyone have any question for Sylvia before? Okay, um. I'll, I'll tie up some of the loose ends. Luckily, when Sylvia uh, was approached, our city planner, we never got, received any formal communication, J C or myself, or I believe anyone on the council about this project, but um, uh, the airport, um, some staffers from the airport reached out to ask about the zoning and different requirements. Um, and when we, um, Sylvia told J C about the project, um, and we saw the proportions, which as she said, um, greatly exceed any density that, you know, is allowed in our city. We met with our commissioner, county commissioner Cabrera, um, to ask about the project. And he let us know that it was um, up at the mayor's office um, and was circling through the county departments for review, which is evidently a normal process for these projects when they're uh, for these proposals. So we met with, J C and I met with uh, Mayor Levine Cava and um, let the, our county commissioner and our uh, Mayor Levine Cava know that um, we were disappointed that we're not part of the initial review of this and that we want to be included in it. We're stakeholders in anything that happens, even though it's county property and it's airport property, it is in Miami Springs. So it's in our community and um, we definitely want to be involved with any discussions. And I think we've gotten that commitment from both of them going forward. Um, so I'll let J C expand upon that.
Yeah, and, and like you said, Mayor, you know, after our meeting with, with Mayor, um, with Mayor Cava, she, she indicated that she was going to, you know, include us, keep us in the loop, um, as far as how this project progresses. But even uh, and, and, and after that, earlier today, we spoke again with Commissioner Cabrera. And what they've all said is that it, this is still very early on. These, these properties are, since they're owned by um, uh, the, the airport itself, they are regulated by FAA. So the FAA has certain say and uh, you can sell a property or not. And so uh, when we were trying to get additional details as to what they were look, what they were thinking, they were like, it's, it's just really too early to, to even tell. So I can say that we've heard, you know, the county uh, commission as a whole is, i- indicate that they want to turn parking lots into housing to address the, the, the housing issue in, in South Florida. You know, co- you know, extending the U, or the UDB is not an option. So they're looking at everything and this is where we are. As of right now, we don't have much more information, but as soon as we do, we will, you know, we'll share it and, and, and we will be involved. The, my, my whole goal was to be at the table.
Yes.
And I think we're going to get that.
And I just want to um, uh, clarify that any development, as long as I'm mayor, and I think I speak for the, the council, um, any development that occurs in Miami Springs, we will be sure that um, uh, we will be advocating that it's in the best interest of our residents and maintains the character of our community. Um, so you can be sure that, you know, from our end, um, we'll be involved in that part. We know um, and, and again, proposals can come and go. That's, anyone has a right to submit a proposal. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I think just to underscore what you said, the, I think the concerning part was that we hadn't heard about this and I think that um, in acting swiftly and, and speaking with our, our commissioner and with the mayor, uh, I think, uh, because again, these, these aren't, these, this is the airport property and you're dealing with the county. Um, so I, I think the, the biggest thing is that uh, that we make sure that we are at the table. The adage is that if you're not at the table, you're probably uh, on the menu. And I think that it's, it's important that we have a seat at the table and, and make sure that we advocate for our positions and the things that, because obviously the, this proposed project and, and you mentioned it, broad, you know, proposals like this come and go. Uh, it was a drastic change in the density. There, there was really, you know, no transition between uh, what was being proposed there and what was just on the other side of the street and, in, in properties uh, in that same neighborhood. Um, so, and, and it seems like that proposal already changed pretty drastically. So I think the important thing is uh, that we be uh, not only advocating for ourselves and what we feel our needs are. I think that we should continue as we've been planning, we're in the middle of revisioning the northwest uh, thirty-sixth street business district because it's important for our future as a city. Uh, and I think that the clearer we are about what we are, uh, what we want for that area, the clearer we can convey that uh, to the county so that we can come to an accord and so that uh, their needs are met uh, and that they align to uh, the things that we want. And again, that can only happen if we aren't like reflexively, just uh, you know, not in my backyard. I think that we need to be clear about what we want for our future and have, again, have a seat at the table uh, so that we can uh, voice our opinions and advocate for the best interests of our city. Uh, because again, we're, you know, I think the city is limited uh, in terms of how they can dictate what the county does in some respects. And it's very important that we work closely with the county uh, and, and keep a watchful eye and, and again, continue to work on what we envision for that area so that we can clearly communicate those goals.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so all of you have valid points. My, my main issue here is this property um, is not ours, right? Our vision for that area, which was to create the higher density on that side of town, was to create um, family housing, right? But where the city would make tax revenue, right? So their actual residents. So now we have a property that's being proposed. It's very preliminary, but once it's exposed out there, uh, some, something may, may happen. Um, even if it, they're just proposing one building, I see three, three huge buildings creates an enormous amount of density. So now we're using um, our city assets and resources to go out to these communities as well. So, and we're not getting revenue. So it's different if you have apartment buildings that are residents paying their fair share of taxes. Of course, you were going to go out there and service them. But one thing is having a county owned property, having housing, having zero tax revenue, and then we also have to service the buildings. And we're always, you've mentioned it before, Mayor, we already have a deficit with the bed tax. We don't even get our fair share of bed tax. So then to put this, we're kind of like adding this to the menu of, of, of issues that we're going to have to face. So it's kind of, I guess, getting into some sort of agreement. We can't really go against the county because at the end of the day, it's their property and they're going to do what they wish. So I, I, I would think if we can make some sort of um, partnership or business aspect with them where we can have a fair share because it's going to hit us hard if we create this density and we have our police officers going out there, code compliance going out there, anything it is that we do right now. Um, so it's not only aesthetically that we're looking at this, but I'm also looking how we, we work around the live local act because they have a lot of um, jurisdiction over a lot of uh, zoning and planning items here. So um, I think we're going to have to get creative and maybe we do need a special meeting to, to tackle those
Well.
those angles. I don't know.
Um, let me address, we, in fact, J C and I spoke again with Commissioner Cabrera this afternoon.
Okay.
Um, we had uh, another, um, actually by phone. I feel very strongly, live local or anything, the purpose of creating and, and clearly workforce housing is an issue right now. I mean, it's on top of everyone's mind. Um, affordable housing, right? But the purpose of creating any project is not to create it and move on. It's to create it and as I say, to look back in five years and that it's a success. And in that ten years, it's even bigger success. And the only way that that can happen in partic- and especially in twenty years or decades down the road, and the only way that that can happen is for anything that's built to have the resources, inherent resources uh, and support in it for police. Uh, obviously, infrastructure, but police more than anything of, you know, that the community can provide the amount of police services and other services that municipality, municipality has to provide for that area. Um, our concern with this project was that um, that it would be, we wouldn't get a tax benefit today when we spoke with Commissioner Cabrera. Um, he assured us that um, any work on that, and again, we have, as Heidi can tell you, our charter and there's a whole bunch of of zoning and things that doesn't allow for this expanded, you know, density. Um, but nonetheless, the properties are being considered. And as I've said, we're definitely a stakeholder in this and we need to be at the table, we need to be considered um, uh, at the county level and, and with our county commissioner and, and the county mayor and any county departments um, included in the conversations. But we were told today by our county commissioner that um, the properties would um, not be tax free, that they would provide revenue. And actually, because they're FAA properties, um, FAA requires selling at fair market value. So the county cannot convey the properties.
So the tax revenue would be going to City Miami Springs, not the county?
It's like, whatever your tax bill is, there's a number of agencies in the tax bill. So it'd be your normal tax bill. So the county, city, the school board, state, um, whoever's on your tax bill, it'd be, that's who, who would get the revenue from that tax.
Even if the county is the one that owns the property?
No, they wouldn't, it, they wouldn't own it at this point, at that point, they would convey it. And that's what we were told.
They're conveying it because I saw.
It would convey ownership, complete ownership, not a long
But actually, because it's, if it's airport property, my understanding is they can't convey it, they have to actually sell it. Um and to sell it, it has to be at far fair market value. The FAA requires
Right.
Their properties, airport properties throughout the nation to be sold at fair market value. Um what was explained to me, the purpose for that is that um airports throughout the nation are constantly asking the FAA for millions and billions of dollars to expand. And the FAA wants to make sure that they're using their local resources first. If they own land, that they're using those funds, you know, that they're not, if they own land, that they're not using. Um so um that means that uh and all of this again is in the very preliminary. We've, you know, been told very, very preliminary. Nonetheless, it alarmed us that we were not part of the initial uh discussion.
Yeah, I thought we were doing a land lease, but.
Sure.
They're gonna.
Yes, sir.
So I I mean, I I thank you, Sylvia. First of all, you handed the phone call and got all the information and Mayor and 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 JC meeting with the with all of the officials. I, you know, personally took a drive by there again, just to kind of go around it. It's a fairly large piece of land for Miami Springs. Maybe in another city, it's not that big. Uh and 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 the and the so the west side, east side of it, we have some buildings right across the universities there and then the uh the realtors have their building. On this side of it is a whole line of uh houses, just uh just a regular street, you know, just a two-way street there. And then, of course, south there is um, there are some other lots and some other things in construction. So and then, of course, you got Royal Point Sienna, and then you got the apartments right across the street. And Royal Point Sienna, we uh converted it into two two one one-way streets each side. So um and uh but it is airport property. And the county is involved in this. And I and I appreciate what everyone said up here about, you know, being part of this conversation because it's kind of something that's coming. One way or another, there's some interest in in this development and there have to be all these processes that the FAA is involved in. But at the end of the day, it sits in our city, right? And and uh and when we had the conversation, um must have been over a year ago around the density for trains. They talked about uh, you know, increasing density at the other end uh in the birth section. You know, it it was it was alarming to folks and alarming to us. Uh you know, because of what what it would mean. And and if you've noticed, they built the building across this across Okeechobee, right next to the train station. That's about a seven, eight-story building. So anyway. Um so I appreciate that we uh that we are part of this conversation and that we have assurances from the mayor and from the county commissioner about being at the table. At the table to see and be able to provide feedback to folks who especially for buyers, I don't know who the buyer is or who these people are, but I'm sure they don't know our city. And we know our city. So um, you know, I am concerned about it and um and 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 will be, you know, vigilant uh about this process because um, you know, we have our own interests, as you mentioned. We we've talked about uh, you know, expanding maybe police department building or something. We've always had those. We've had that at least for the last four years. I've been on council. We've been talking about how do we alleviate uh particularly the needs of the police department where we have to rent space on on Westward uh Westward because of uh, we don't have enough room.
And we're bursting at the seams at City Hall.
And we're busting bursting at the seams.
Have offices because there's no room here.
And so so anyway, I I I would hope that as this moves forward, if it does move forward, uh that um you know, Mayor, you representing us and the city manager, um we might be able to um, you know, look for some accommodations in addition to what whomever is interested in that property wants to do uh to meet some of the needs that we have in terms of our expansion.
Councilman, I wanted to to expand on something that Councilman Fihad said. Um we we realize that that area is underutilized and, you know, we've been so it's not that, again, we're against development. We've been looking at that area and saying, you know, for what, a year and a half now, ever since the Business and Economic Development Task Force was created.
Yes.
Made recommendations on how to better utilize that area, um particularly to get uh more revenues um for the city. Um so it's this is, you know, not out of line, that the massiveness of the project is certainly out of line with, you know, with our vision, but um that, you know, development in that area is certainly not
Yeah.
Out of line with what we've been talking about for oh uh two years and and planning with Sylvia.
Yes.
And Heidi and our city manager.
And and the resident who spoke about this earlier and the concerns uh in terms of density. Uh even though there are some commercial properties, right, right at the end of of South Royal and and in Lejeune. Maybe we can find a uh.
And we've recently had.
The realtor's needs.
And we recently had the Realtors Building.
Yes.
The new Realtors Headquarter, which is right in line with what we've been envisioning for that area, commercial, uh a nice commercial component. Um and it's zoned uh for mixed use, right, Sylvia? So it's not zoned only for residential. That area is zoned for commercial mixed use. Okay.
To the chair.
Yes, sir. Did you? Sorry, did you?
That's right. Uh but uh yes, I think that people might not know, but it's kind of a been a blessing in disguise. And I think for a while, as I was making my assessments on that area and what the economic impact could be, obviously, to my surprise, finding Airbus has this thirty-two-year contract where they don't pay any taxes to their city. So obviously, the key of this is that you want to be involved in these conversations before it happens. So of course, seeing those properties, seeing the potential of us not having any say in it. Uh it's been a blessing because we, as we mentioned earlier, we're doing, we are rezoning these undeveloped areas. And the ultimate goal is to try to maybe create a community or revitalize, but but make it a sense of community. Because right now, obviously, we don't have that. You have transient people that come through there and don't care what's going on. And obviously, things happen. Uh and we got more problems because of it. But ultimately, we are planning to rezone particular pockets. So it's been a blessing in disguise. So seeing that those properties potential, I'd say absolutely, we need to stop the brakes on any conversation when it comes to density and stuff that will be grabbed by these guys. These guys, they have one goal. And is to is to, you know, um feed their their need, what they feel is, which is, you know, uh affordable housing or uh workforce housing, you know, there's a little bit of a distinction in there. I think people have a bad uh you know, reputation when they talk about uh workforce housing is not the same. Uh and most buildings only have a forty percent that are consider, I guess, affordable housing. And and the workforce is technically overmarked. So you're not gonna have people that can't afford to uh to live there. But ultimately, the point is, at the end of the day, is that we've been able to stop and put the brakes on them having an avenue to grab stuff and just do whatever they want. Uh so we're glad that we're in the conversation. Uh yes, we do have a say in it, even though it's the county property. The only the portion they do have is they have a per- a percentage of it that does get close to the rapid transit zone. So that part makes it difficult for us. But the rest of the properties of those three parcels that the mayor was mentioning and and they've been mentioning up here, they do not have that easy access and they need to go through us. So this is just perfect timing for us to be involved and not uh and and play an active role. So I'm just glad that uh we found uh, you know, hints of what possibly could come. And that way, we can play a little bit more proactive uh in uh in having conversations with them. So.
Uh I just wanted to, you know, it struck me uh in listening to you guys. We we had scheduled the when we first found out about this, we had scheduled an emergency meeting. And then it was it was uh canceled and postponed. Uh and I I think I'm I'm glad that we did uh because this is a very fluid situation. The fact that you guys have spoken with people at the state level, at the county level, that you've spoke with Mayor Cava, that you've talked to our county commissioner, it it again, strikes me that this is something that's very fluid. And uh I think that uh us having these kind of conversations is exactly what we need to have uh because we don't you know, but I I'm hesitant to get up here and start publicly opining until we know more. It did. It just it struck me that in the conversation we were having now, as part of discussion, there was a conversation about the would there be no revenue? Would there be some revenue? Um because I think we don't want to just like impulsively react and be against something if we don't know exactly what it is that we're we're saying we are against. We need to uh have the kind of communication that we've been having. Again, we need to continue to, you know, refine our vision for what we want for that area. You guys will be reminded that when we were trying to get the annexation, uh one of the one of the criticisms that was uh that was uh forth about us is well, what have you done with the Northwest Business Corridor? Uh is that a a thriving economic hub that, you know, and just you guys are promising what's gonna happen in uh if you annex an area, but what have you done there? And so that's why we're tackling that. That's why we're we're doing a a revitalization and really thinking about what our vision is. Uh but I'm glad that we are communicating a whole lot more with these people. We also have to, everyone has to understand that our city is part of a a broader dynamic metropolitan market. The Miami-Dade County is the seventh largest county in the country. Um and we need to work with the county. We need to uh, you know, rather than just saying like, no, and being defiant, we need to work with the county uh measure twice, cut once. Uh I'm glad that we're taking this approach uh and that we're communicating a lot more with uh all the stakeholders and that we can again, continue to work on on what we envision so that we can be clear about what our needs are and uh what we want for that area so that uh it it'll be a lot easier for things to align to us if we're uh clear about what we want as a community.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and move to um item twelve C, request by Councilman Santeen.
Um although I haven't been a real big fan of the racquetball courts, uh definitely uh when conversations were out there about uh you know, relocating and opening a new facility, I'm I'm not gonna lie, uh was I'm not a fan of that. Obviously, it's one of the sports that is least used in our community. But at the same time, I honestly only seen it from the outside. I don't play racquetball. And I do have people that I know that do play it. And I was really completely surprised going in there and seeing how bad this facility looks like. Um it's an eyesore. It's not even fair to those that do play it. Um uh just because it's not the most popular, it doesn't mean we need to have this eyesore out there. And uh and 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 get to the point where, yeah, is there another sport? And maybe you can say it's more in need. But at the same time, we shouldn't, we should not do that to the expense of disenfranchising those that do play. And for that reason, I've become more of a uh active on really making a point of saving what's there. And all we need, I think, is just a little bit of uh, you know, I'm not gonna say lipstick because uh I might need a little bit more than lipstick, but there's things we could do without having to completely knock it down or or think about opening a new facility. But just to leave it there because we're not gonna do anything about it for a while, it's wrong. It's not something I want to see, and I don't think it's fair to the ones that play.
Mayor, if I if I may jump in, and I'm sorry, Jackie. Um Councilman mentioned this to me earlier, earlier, well, we've been talking about this since last week, uh uh when he brought it to my attention. And I went out there because I don't play racquetball. So I went out there and I'm like, yeah, it needs something because it's a facility that the city owns. It's a facility that the city offers as a service, right? It's racquetball courts, but it's not in the best of shape. Um it's it needs maintenance. Um so what I want to do is uh work with Omar, get some contractors to come out here to scrape it down, um because you scrape, you just do whatever it needs to do so that it looks good and that it's functional and that it operates as a as a um racquetball court. Um we will also take a look at the ADA accessibility because the doors to get in are about yay high and you you have to kind of squat and go in. So we'll we'll take a look at what it would cost to do that. Um and I'll come back and provide a report to the council. Um it's an eyesore and it doesn't need to look like that.
Thank you, JC, and thank you, Councilman. Does anyone have anything they want to mention?
No, to the chair, the only thing I wanted to mention, I I believe we spoke about this um many moons ago um during several budgets. And I think that the issue was was funding at that time, but I think that we're in a different state. So thank you for bringing the item back up. Um I just don't know where we left off, but yeah, Omar could give you a definite history on that and why we haven't approached forward.
Yeah.
We may be in a different situation.
Yeah, I think what the 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 plans that Omar shared with me were a little more extensive than 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 I was imagining. Um he was talking about removing one wall and and the cost would be greater there. Um I'm thinking about what we have, fixing that up, making it look good, and then making the door bigger so that people can get in, you know.
I won't go in. I I feel like I'm gonna get locked in.
It it's it's a weird feeling. It's a weird feeling.
I haven't been back, but it's kind of scary. It's like
It it.
I feel like we went to another dimension.
It's not very inviting.
And I think, well, we've talked about it in the past. We go, you know, there's not that many people that use it, but it's it's kind of what comes first, the chicken or the egg, you know? Do people not use it because it's in poor such poor condition? Definitely. Um I think when we left off uh discussing it uh two years ago or so, um Omar had told us that um it really needs to be sandblasted to the bone because what we've been doing is repainting it. And then when you repaint it, the ball hits and it just leaves a mark and kind of cracks, you know?
And then it bounces somewhere else.
Somewhere, right. So you know, it really needs, then the sandblasting might be very expensive, but um nonetheless, um uh I think if we had nice facilities, uh we'd probably get more people to use it too, you know, it's um so I'm looking forward to to hearing JC what you find out.
Okay, and I'll bring that back.
Okay, and thank you, Councilman, for bringing that back. Anything else on that? All right, let's move to reports by our esteemed city attorney. Okay, the city manager?
Uh yes, Mayor. Um this week, I'm I'm happy to report that the Veterans Memorial bid bids are due. Um I'm hoping for a good bid, although in the mandatory pre-bid meeting, one bidder showed up. Um so I'm hoping for, I'm hoping for a good response there. We'll see. And I'll I'll obviously, we'll we'll vet that and and review it and analyze it and then bring it and make a recommendation to the council. Um the parking plan that uh we discussed uh some months ago as a result of the parking study. Um we've installed the signs in on Canal Street. Although the public works, they they extend, they they install them a little too far. Um so I have to bring them uh remove those, bring them back. And then this week, they're gonna install um the ones on Westward. At the meeting of the twenty-eighth, um there's been a there was for, we've been going back and forth with uh regarding the contract and procurement for the LPR, the mobile LPR system that we need to enforce parking. Um uh so that should be all resolved and on the agenda at the next meeting. So by in the very near future, you will see us hopefully enforcing the three-hour parking. This is we're not, it's not a metered parking. It's just three-hour parking in certain areas. And then as you move further away from the city center, from the circle, then there's no limits there, as we had discussed previously. Um also, I wanted to uh give you an update. Um I applied recently for a number of, we have a number of grants that are open and and but there was one that we recently applied for. It's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. And this one, actually, Councilman Santeen brought this to my attention. And um as well as um uh Mayor Dino from from Virginia Gardens, there's a Trails Go Grant um for that you can apply up to two-hundred-thousand dollars, no match. Um and I was thinking that we can begin the process of beautifying or improving um Curtis Parkway, the walkway in the middle, the trail. Um some of those bollards out there are, well, I wouldn't want to lean on one um because they will tip over. Um they're not in the best of shape. And I'm thinking with two-hundred thousand, we can do maybe a block or two and begin that process and slowly start chipping away at it. So we did apply for that grant. Um as well as I applied for, I believe it was the the one of the stormwater grants for our stormwater master plan. And we have obviously a number of construction projects. We just got a million dollars today. Um so yeah, our grants division is very busy.
Great. Thank you, JC. Great. Thank you, J C. Okay, um, let's get started with Councilman, um, our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, Vasquez.
Um, thank you. Um, just a couple of things I've, uh, uh, first of all, the, uh, the hurricane season and the, uh, you know, we dodged the bullet again, but I feel for those people in Tampa, um, who got hit again. You know, fortunately, I have family in Tampa, in Davenport, in Orlando, in Sanford. And by the grace of God, they were all good. My sister-in-law lost power for a couple of days, but, um, there was a considerable amount of flooding in the Orlando area. And I saw pictures of folks being rescued, um, by, uh, by boats. Um, so, and then we've got Nadine hanging around and, and a couple of other unnamed storms. Meteorologists that I've been following are talking about the, the season being a little longer. So making sure that we have all those emergency, uh, um, um, you know, ordinances and, and, and all the things in place. Um, you know, we were prepared, I'm, I'm glad that the city gave out, I think, twenty-three-hundred bags of sand.
Yes.
I didn't get in time, but that's okay. Um, but, uh, folks, folks did, and, and that was important because, uh, you never know, right? And while we didn't even get a win, or as, uh, Bob Best said, not enough wind to knock off your hat and not enough water to fill a cup. It doesn't mean the next time, uh, we won't, but, um, so, so I'm happy to report, good news on, on that front. Um, and also, um, it's Hispanic Heritage Month and today, so, uh, it's been, uh, seen a lot of, you know, very interesting, uh, documentaries. And, uh, very important, particularly in this, in, in, in Florida, it's, it's been, uh, well, we've got an interesting mix of people, don't we? What a wonderful mosaic of people that we have here. Um, I appreciate the cancer, breast cancer awareness on the Parkway.
The ribbons.
I lost my older sister to that damn cancer, um, and to continue to provide awareness, um, around that, uh, around that issue, and I remember we had the, the girls that were here, uh, recently. Um, how did that event go, by the way? Then, well, great, and, um, so anyway, those are, uh, just a few things that I wanted to share with everyone. Stay safe, uh, and, and, uh, and, uh, keep the, keep the sandbags coming just in case. Oh, and by the way, on the, on the, on the, uh, on that court, you know, that we were just talking about, I mean, it, it looks awful. And I hadn't seen those pictures till now, it just, yeah, let's get that done. Thank you.
We will.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Fajet?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, commend staff, uh, and also, uh, the council. Uh, because I think that in the last couple of weeks, we've, we've shown the kind of, uh, uh, responsiveness and, and, and forward thinking that's necessary. Uh, storm is coming, uh, we declared a state of emergency, we got all those sandbags out, that was communicated. Uh, to us, I know that I reached out to a bunch of residents that I know that, uh, that usually suffer from flooding. And we were able to get a lot of people those, uh, sandbags, uh, in a quick turnaround. Uh, and, and I think the same thing happened with respect to communication with stakeholders, uh, with, uh, you know, something that, a project that came before us that, uh, wasn't, uh, communicated to us, uh, uh, maybe as swiftly as needed to. So I think it's, uh, again, commendable that, uh, we're being responsive and we're acting in the best interest of the city. Uh, and, uh, we're being proactive, uh, which is a great thing. So thanks again to all involved.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman.
Um, okay, so I don't have much to share other than thank you for a productive meeting. Um, I'd like to also thank you to our staff members and everybody that, uh, worked together to get those sandbags out. It's just, it shows how our community is so, it, it's small, but it's strong. And, um, we kind of forget at those times in need who we are, what we are, we're just there for one purpose. And it's just to, to give a helping hand. I mean, at the end of the day, we're all family, so, um, so that's that. I do want to ask for our city clerk to add on to, because as we, as we heard earlier today, there was maybe some backup that should have been provided so that we have a better idea of what we're speaking about. So to item twelve B, I'd like to see if we can add on the, e- even though everything's very preliminary and very tentative, but I think if, for the, for, for transparency purposes, so that our community can be informed of what's going on. We have a lot of community members that are very smart, very, uh, um, opinionated, where they have, uh, feedback they may give us on these types of items. But anyways, I think it should have been part of the agenda, we can add that in. And also, together with this, um, the way that these, these types of things work out is that the county has what is called, um, they're implementing order number eight four. Because obviously, when I see something like this, we all freak out, right? So I just wanted to do a little bit of research on how is it that the county works and what their rights are when it comes to their type of properties and how they use it. So we can go ahead, I think I sent it to you, Erica, if I didn't, I'll send it to you again. Um, it's the guidelines and procedures for the sale, lease and conveyance of county real property. So I think it's important for, you know, I mean, I didn't know how this worked until I really started to look into it. Um, so together with those two items, so, uh, they understand that whatever position that we're in, we're very limited to in certain instances. So I just, just for the, for, for the sake of transparency. Um, and I just had one question. Uh, J C, do we still have our grant writer? I remember a couple of months ago, we do, okay, so we still have her.
Yes, yes, and they're the ones that apply for the grants that, that we, that we've applied for.
All right, and that's it. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Santin.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm also obviously thankful for a productive meeting and, uh, and for, uh, our city manager, staff and employees who have done an amazing job, uh, back to the same thing, a little, a little train that could, right? Uh, they, uh, did a lot for a small group of, uh, employees. Twenty-three-hundred bags is a, it's an understatement how big of a deal that is. They worked hard, so they, in a way, they probably did deserve those two days off. Even though some of us probably wanted to do things to do, but we appreciate it, what they did. And as always, I'm always going to bring up the, uh, activities for this beautiful community of ours and everything that highlights what's best about us. Uh, remember, I think the Women's Club has the, uh, uh, Witch's Ride, October eighteenth or nineteenth.
Seventh, Saturday.
Saturday, so on this, uh, is it in the circle or is it on Curtis Parkway?
At the Women's Club, it starts, sorry.
Oh, it starts there and then goes, yeah, so that's one of the great activities. We also have the Cancer Society, who has a charity dinner at the Whole Nineteen. As a, uh, cancer survivor, I'm, uh, very, um, proud of the work they do and I will do my part. Sometimes you gotta start doing other things and I've stayed away a little bit of helping as much as I could, but, um, they're having their charity soon. And of course, we're around the corner, a couple of weeks away from, uh, these two big events that are going to highlight our city and our, and our, um, and the, uh, the legacy of Glenn Curtis. Uh, and first starts out with November first, that we're having an evening of history, uh, at the Curtis Mansion kickoff centennial event. And we're going to have, uh, you're going to get your money's worth. So you're going to have Rick Leisenring, who's the curator emeritus from the Curtis Museum, who will be there for, for to have a talk, as well as a book signing of the book that he wrote about all the history on his motorcycles. And we will have the nineteen-oh-seven replica, of course, the other one, the Smithsonian Institute did not want to hand it out to us. But we have a replica of the actual motorcycle, uh, that broke the world record and, uh, speed record in Ormond Beach. So we'll have a private showing there and then also the next night, the next day during the day, during the vintage motorcycle in Carshol, that will also be there. Uh, but that night, we're going to have that and as well, the Historical Society. And in collaboration with, uh, the relationship we've been building up with, um, the Curtis, uh, Museum. And Rick Leisenring, uh, they're building a new exhibit. It's going to be, uh, Miami's First Flight School by Glenn Curtis and all the people that he taught the world to, to fly. So that should be a very interesting and great exhibit that the museum itself will be able to hold on to, uh, for future people to go and watch. But it'll, and, and look at and, um, and read. But, uh, we'll have that, that same event as well, aside from food, music and so forth. So hopefully, everybody goes out and enjoys all these activities that we have in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I just want, and, and, um, going from where Councilman Santin said about our activities, um, our city is, especially right now, till the end of the year, there's so many going on. I encourage you, please sign up for our newsletter. If you're, you haven't signed up, it's so easy to sign up for a city newsletter, you'll get it in your email every Sat, every Friday morning. And, um, it is full of, well, ish, things that are going on in the city, but also events. Um, real quickly, you'll know for that week and, you know, the coming weeks, um, we have so much going on. The city I know has, um, uh, and Tammy would have normally mentioned this, is, um, this coming Saturday, Friday and Saturday, I think, is the costume contest and pumpkin carving contest. And then the following, uh, Saturday is, um, the Halloween Howl at the Moon that we have, um, at the Circle. The Women's Club Witch's Event, the witches are riding again, they're back in Miami Springs and they'll be riding. And it's going to be a lot of fun at the Women's Club this Saturday. So, uh, please all, um, make sure you're signed up to receive, you know, either check us on the city on Instagram, Facebook, um, X, uh, newsletter, whatever you want, but keep up with what's going on, because there's just so much fun. And it really is a way to engage with the community, with your friends, catch up with old friends that you haven't seen for a while, whenever you respond to these communities. And, um, uh, and keep our community thriving. Uh, and for my part, I wanted to mention, um, week before last, I was in Orlando on Thursday and Friday. Uh, this is the weekend right before Milton appeared on the horizon for, um, the Florida Legislative, um, Committee Meetings. Um, there's our committees that are to prepare for the legislative session for twenty-twenty-five in this case, and try to, um, decide on issues. People in the meetings, I'm on the Taxation and Finance Committee, um, trying to identify certain issues that we, um, want to uh, pursue legislators to, um, to consider passing in favor for our communities, for our cities, for our municipalities. So, um, I am constantly on there, bringing up the bed tax issue, the TDT, trying to bring awareness throughout the state of how many other cities may be, um, leaving money on the table, you know, some of the money that should be, um, collected at, uh, from their hotels. Some of it should come back to their communities to be used to support the hotels. But also, um, the other thing we were looking at, which is, um, got the possibility, it's being considered as business taxes and business registration of the state preempting us so that we wouldn't be able to, um, require businesses to register in the city and collect business taxes. Um, certainly for, uh, me, I, I think that that would gravely, um, uh, be a negative for us, because this is how we know what businesses are existing in our city, particularly home businesses and our taxes and some, evidently in some cities, the, the, um, occupational licenses are, are very high. Our city, they're very nominal, um, so it's, uh, everyone that spoke there was very in favor of allowing communities to, um, to levy the business taxes and require registration. Um, so that's something that'll probably be up for, um, consideration. And, and these are things that are keep chipping away at our home rule, you know, at our ability for our city to decide, you know, what sort of information, what sort of, of community we want. So, um, with that, um, just want to wish everyone, um, happy week. Thank goodness, we're past three hurricanes, let's hope we get through the season without any more. Um, God bless America and God bless our beautiful city of Miami Springs. Good night.
Thank you.